Third term of Baltimore City Council. Good afternoon. The forty-ninth meeting of your seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder to members, press, folks of the public, it's still City Hall policy that you wear masks. The council is fully vaccinated as well as boosted. When we're talking, you'll see many of us remove our masks. A couple of members have elected not to wear masks. We also ask folks who are visiting with us today to please ensure all your electronic devices are on silent if you decide not to turn them off. Our invocation for this evening will be delivered by the amazing Reverend Faith Savoy of Charity AM Zion Church here in the city of Baltimore. Reverend Savoy, pleasure is yours. Please lead us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we come to you humbly as we know how. God, we asking God that you please, God, step in the midst of this council meeting. Lord God, we need you now like never before. We need you to incline your ear to our hearts so that you can hear what it is that we are asking of you. Father God, we thank you for all that you have done for us thus far. We ask God that you just continue to speak to our leaders of this great city. We ask that you cover them and protect them, continue to speak through them, continue to walk and talk with them, Father God. Lord God, you know what is going on down here, Father God. You know that we need you now like never before, dear Lord. We asking God, would you please protect our children, God? The violence that's going on right now, God, you know all about it, dear Lord. So we asking you, God, we asking God if we could come on one accord with one another and agree to disagree. Lord God, we need you to do what you do best. Have your way, have your way upon the council of this day, God. We asking God if you don't mind, God, speak to Nick Mosby, Father God. Speak to his heart, speak to his mind, speak to his spirit. We asking God that you just walk with him and talk with him and do what you do best. Lord God, now you please, God, protect our city. Go from corner to corner, go from house to house. We asking God that you protect our schools, God, protect the teachers, Father God, protect our districts, God, protect our police officers, dear God. We need you, Father, now like never before, dear Lord. We asking God that every minister, God, be open to hear from you and pray to you for our city, Father God. We love you, God. We love you more today than we did on yesterday, and we will love you forevermore. This is my prayer. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen. Thank you so much, Reverend Savoy. At this time, please stand and state the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll. I'm sorry, before we get into roll, we do have a showcase, an amazing showcase this evening. If you could please come on up. It's my pleasure to welcome Ms. Megan Batista, the Program Manager at Tax Preparations for Cash Campaign. Now in its twenty-second year, providing free tax preparation services to low-to-modern-income Marylanders to nonprofit cash asset savings and hope campaign of Maryland is again offering free tax preparation and services to anyone who's earned $60,000 or less in the year of 2022. The kickoff takes place this Friday, January the 27th, which is also National Earned Tax Credit Awareness Day. It's critical that we work directly with CASH to ensure that our residents are not going to scrupulous. Tax preparers are not attempting to potentially do things on their own. We know that many times those mistakes cost them real dollars in the bank, and I know that that is what Ms. Batista is here to talk to us about. So thank you, Ms. Batista, for joining us. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much for that excellent introduction, and thank you all for having me here today. As Mr. Mosby said, my name is Megan Batista, and I'm the Program Manager for Tax Partnerships at the Cash Campaign of Maryland, and thank you so much for having me. I'm with you today to talk about the Cash Campaign and our free programs and services in hopes that you will help us spread the word to your constituents. CASH is a nonprofit that is headquartered right here in Baltimore City. Our mission is to promote economic advancement for low-to-moderate-income individuals and families here in Baltimore, as well as throughout this great state of Maryland. One way that we accomplish this mission is by offering free tax preparation services. CASH partners with the IRS's Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, or VITA for short, to bring no-cost, high-quality tax preparation services to Marylanders who make less than $60,000 last year. As you can see from the flyer in your folders, we are operating free tax preparation sites in central, west, northwest, north, and east Baltimore City, as well as Baltimore County and throughout the state of Maryland, thanks to our partners. Our results from last year, from tax year 2021, were compelling. CASH and its VITA Coalition partners prepared a total of 13,211 tax returns, resulting in over $27.8 million in federal and state refunds by the end of tax season. CASH and our partners also returned over $11 million in federal and state earned income tax credit, as well as $6.6 million in the expanded child tax credits to Maryland taxpayers. All told, we saved our clients an estimated $3.3 million in tax preparation fees by providing the service at no cost. To make an appointment, you can visit bemorefreetaxes.org to self-schedule, or you can call our appointment hotline at 410-234-8008, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. CASH treats tax time as an opportunity to improve the financial well-being of our clients in a meaningful way. We encourage our tax clients to save their refunds to help them reach major financial goals, and we offer them the chance to deposit these refunds into Series I Savings Bonds, which currently have an interest rate of 6.89%. I don't know about your savings accounts, but that's a pretty good interest rate. I'm seeing everyone nodding. CASH offers other free programs and services and makes sure that these are available to taxpayers utilizing our free tax preparation services. For example, CASH provides free financial coaching in partnership with Trust Plus, which pairs clients with financial coaches who can help them reach measurable financial goals, such as paying down their debts or saving money for homeownership and more. We also work with pro bono certified financial planners to provide specific assistance on complex financial issues. For example, if a taxpayer reveals that they have recently won a settlement and are curious about their best recourse for investing or saving those funds, we would refer them to one of our pro bono CFPs who are working with our program. We also have public benefit screening and case management services. Case managers can screen individuals for over 22 federal and state local benefits, such as Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP for short, utility assistance, and more. And last but not least, for the first time since the pandemic, Money Power Day will be back in person. Money Power Day is the region's largest free financial fitness fair, and it's filled with exciting activities, workshops, speakers, and exhibitors that are curated to create an energy-packed experience. Money Power Day will feature a kid's zone with fun financially-focused activities for youth of all ages, a small business zone where participants can receive one-on-one advice from entrepreneurship experts and learn about business planning and tax compliance for small businesses, and so much more. Money Power Day will take place at Polywestern High School on Saturday, March 18th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. If you have any questions, I encourage you to contact us at info@cashmd.org, or you can reach me directly using the business card enclosed in your packets. Thank you again for your time and for helping us get the word out.
Thank you so much, Ms. Batista. As she stated, this is really, really critical time, particularly as it relates to some of our families struggling coming out of the pandemic. Everyone on your desk, you have a pamphlet of information. I ask, I encourage you, I urge you to please make sure you share it with your constituents. This was a campaign that the late, great Elijah Cummings was always so strong about. He was always energized, but he was extra energized during the Cash Campaign of Maryland. So again, I ask you guys to continue to spread the word, continue to push this. I know that they do an excellent job on social media, so I also encourage you guys to utilize some of their flyers and some of their posts to reshare, retweet out to our constituents. Thank you again. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to the Clerk. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Sure. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Now we're going to proceed to adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the journal for the January 9, 2023 proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is adopted. Bills signed by the mayor can be found at the beginning of page two of the agenda. At this time, we're going to turn to executive nominations. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first one.
EA 23-0169 Louis O. Cardona, Member Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District 1.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. Madam Clerk.
EA 23-0170 Maria Daniela Priesthoff, Member Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District 10.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. Madam Clerk.
EA 23-0171 Luis Espinoza, Member Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District 4.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA 23-0172 Desiree Velasquez, Member Baltimore Hispanic Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA 23-0173 Whitney Visker, Member Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District 14.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA 23-0174 Jez Aaronberg, Member Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District 1.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA 23-0175 Faith Leach, City Administrator, City of Baltimore Administrator, District 11.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight. Madam Clerk, we'll go now to bills to be introduced. If you could please read the first bill.
City Council Bill 23-0330 Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, Department of Housing and Community Development, for $6,600,000 for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund capital appropriation in the amount of $6,600,000 to the Department of Housing and Community Development. PRJ 002743 PSO Perkins Phase II Public Infrastructure to provide funding for the Perkins Somerset Project and providing a special effective date. Sponsor President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 23-0331 Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, Department of Housing and Community Development, $11 million for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund capital appropriation in the amount of $11 million to the Department of Housing and Community Development. PRJ 002439 Vacants Initiative to provide funding for the Vacants Initiative and provide for a special effective date. Sponsor President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 23-0332 Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, Baltimore City Convention Center, $1 million for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund capital appropriation in the amount of $1 million to the Baltimore City Convention Center. PRJ 001759 918004 West Side Free Elevator to provide funding to maintain the Baltimore City Convention Center in good working order and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk.
23-0333 Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, Baltimore City Convention Center, for $1,543,000 for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund capital appropriation in the amount of $1,543,000 to the Baltimore City Convention Center. PRJ 002746 East Building Elevator Replacement to provide funding to maintain the Baltimore City Convention Center in good working order and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk.
City Bill 23-0334 Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, Baltimore City Convention Center, $3,757,000 for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund capital appropriation in the amount of $3,757,000 to the Baltimore City Convention Center. PRJ 002747 East Building Escalator to provide funding to maintain the Baltimore City Convention Center in good working order and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk.
Bill 23-0335 Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, Mayor's Office of Information and Technology, $1,250,000 for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund capital appropriation in the amount of $1,250,000 to the Mayor's Office of Information and Technology. PRJ 001617 914017 Enterprise IT Infrastructure to provide funding for enterprise information technology infrastructure and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk.
Bill 23-0336 Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, Mayor's Office of Information Technology, $1,750,000 for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund capital appropriation in the amount of $1,750,000 to the Mayor's Office of Information Technology. PRJ 002410 915079 117-079 Infrastructure Platforms End-of-Life Refresh/Upgrade to provide funding for refreshing and upgrading infrastructure platforms that we are at the end of their useful lives and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk.
Bill 23-0337 Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, Mayor's Office of Information and Technology, $1 million for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund capital appropriation in the amount of $1 million to the Mayor's Office of Information and Technology. PRJ 002418 923059 117-059 Upgrade Application Integration and Infrastructure to provide funding for upgraded information technology application integration and infrastructure and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk.
Bill 23-0338 Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, Mayor's Office of Information and Technology, $500,000 for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund capital appropriation in the amount of $500,000 to the Mayor's Office of Information and Technology. PRJ 002405 912072 117-072 City Watch Replacement Camera Cycle to provide funding for the replacement of city watch cameras and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk.
Bill 23-0339 Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, Mayor's Office of Information and Technology, $500,000 for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund capital appropriation in the amount of $500,000 to the Mayor's Office of Information and Technology. PRJ 002417 922029 117-029 Citywide Cyber Security Systems Upgrade to provide funding for upgrading citywide cybersecurity systems and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk.
Bill 23-0340 Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, PRJ 002758 $9 million for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund capital appropriation in the amount of $9 million to PRJ 002758 Wallbrook Junction at Emerson Village Center Support to provide funding for redeveloping the Wallbrook Junction and Emerson Village Center shopping centers and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
Before we move on, I would like to provide an opportunity for... Oh, you want to be added as co-sponsor? You want to speak on behalf of this? Yes, go speak on behalf of this. This is an important item.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. Just happy to see this on here. The redevelopment of both shopping centers has been a long time coming, particularly Emerson Village, which is one of the oldest in the country and the first of its kind in the East Coast. It's experienced a long history of disinvestment, but as we've seen in the response to the recent incidents of violence at the shopping center, it means so much to the Emerson Village community and the surrounding neighborhoods. And so I'm excited to see this much-needed investment move forward, hopefully move forward through the council to really bring it back to its former heyday and what the West Baltimore community expects and deserves. So looking forward to that, and just wanted to sign on as a co-sponsor.
And Mr. Councilman, could you also talk about some of the other financing that's extended to the public?
The... Say it again.
Folks can participate in financing?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So I've been working very closely with the prospective buyer of the center, who has some very aggressive redevelopment plans, which also include the opportunity for residents to purchase shares in the center to support the redevelopment and also build that sort of community-based wealth that is sorely needed in Emerson Village. And they did the same thing at Wallbrook Junction Shopping Center as well. And so I'm excited to be a part of that process as well, and for my constituents watching, stay tuned, we'll have meeting dates. I was told that there were a ton of them in the last iteration of this, and so looking forward to participating.
Thank you so much. Sorry for putting you on the spot. So to Natwana, if you could please ensure that Councilman Burnett is added to the bill. This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk, the next bill.
Bill 23-0341 Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, Department of General Services, $16,600,000 for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund capital appropriation in the amount of $16,600,000 to the Department of General Services. PRJ 000528 Ablewoman HVAC and Fire Protection to provide funding to upgrade the HVAC and fire protection at the Ablewoman Municipal Building and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk.
Bill 23-0342 Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation, Department of General Services, $500,000 for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund capital appropriation in the amount of $500,000 to the Department of General Services. PRJ 002749 City Hall HVAC to provide funding to upgrade the HVAC at City Hall and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk.
Bill 23-0343 Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single-Family Dwelling Unit to Three-Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variance 633 South Monford Avenue for the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three-dwelling units in the R8 Zoning District on the property known as 633 South Monford Avenue, Block 1837, Lot 074 as outlined in red on the accompanying plate and granting a variance from certain off-street parking requirements. Sponsor Cohen.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk.
Bill 23-0344 Rezoning 1302 Key Highway for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 1302 Key Highway, Block 1927A, Lot 034A, as outlined in red on the accompanying plate from the C2 Zoning District to the OR2 Zoning District. Sponsor Costello.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk.
Bill 23-0345 Salary City Solicitor for the purpose of establishing the salary of the city solicitor and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor President Mosby on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk.
Bill 23-0346 RPP Area 48 Riverside Revisions for the purpose of modifying the hours of applicable parking restrictions for residential parking plan area 48 Riverside, reducing the non-permit parking time threshold, establishing an exception to the applicable permit limit, and correcting and conforming related provisions. Sponsor Costello.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Now we're going to turn to resolutions. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first resolution.
City Council Resolution 23-0151R Informational Hearing Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, Inflation Reduction Act for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Office of the City Administrator, the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development, the Bureau of Budget Management and Research, the Department of Finance, the Department of Public Works, and the Department of Transportation to come before the City Council to detail the infrastructure investment and jobs act as the inflation reduction act to describe how the city is positioned to apply for and receive funds from all possible sources for critical projects, to explain the application process for all potential funding sources, to discuss the need for partnership with and outreach to regional and local partners in government, businesses, and community, and to present plans for reporting progress to the City Council and the public. Sponsor Ramos.
At this time, I would like to call on the sponsor of this resolution, Councilwoman Ramos. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. This resolution is for a hearing so that we can learn a lot more about the Infrastructure and Jobs Act and the Inflation Reduction Act, both federal government programs that should be able to get us a bunch of money that we need. And so we want to have a hearing to understand where we are positioned as a city to be able to apply for those funds and also work in partnership with the city to apply for those funds, as well as outreach and transparency. I'm looking forward to the hearing. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you. Obviously, this body, we do not control the specific allocations and awards associated with this money, very similar to ARPA, but it's our legislative duty to provide oversight. Just as many of us have shared concerns about ARPA, this is a way for us to proactively try to get ahead in better understanding the plan and strategy associated with this really, really important money. This could be a game changer depending on how it's spent, and we could see generational impact. So thank you so much, Councilwoman Ramos, for championing this effort for the council. This resolution has been assigned to Rules and Oversight. Madam Clerk, next.
City Council Resolution 23-0152R Informational Hearing Executive Leadership Vacancies for the purpose of inviting the Mayor's Chief of Staff, the City Administrator, representatives from the Department of Public Works, representatives from the Department of Transportation, representatives from the Department of Recreation and Parks, representatives from the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, representatives from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and any other interested parties to come before the City Council to discuss current vacancies and executive leadership positions across all city agencies. The impact of these vacancies on city operations and delivery of services, the impact of relying on long-term interim or acting executives, current plans to fill such vacancies, and generally, the city's ability to attract and retain executive leadership. Sponsor Porter.
Thank you. At this time, the body would like to recognize Councilwoman Porter. I see the hand raised of Chairman Costello. I see the hand raised of Councilwoman Cohen. I see the hand raised of Councilwoman Burnett, Chairman Conway, Vice President Middleton, Chairman Stokes, Councilwoman Dorsey, Chairman Schleifer, Councilwoman Torrance, Councilwoman Ramos. Natwana, we'll go back through that just to make sure we have all the names. At this time, I'd like to recognize the sponsor of the bill.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. As one of the conjoining bodies that constitutes city government, I want to make sure that we are exercising our oversight capabilities to ensure that the citizens of Baltimore have the best and efficient city services as possible. This is an opportunity to work with the administration and to work with leaders within the administration to attack, to attract the best and brightest talent here in Baltimore. All of us realize the impact of these vacancies within our respective districts, and I want to make sure that we have a pulse on where the administration is with regard to recruitment, retaining, and also making sure that these vacancies move through the process as soon as possible so we can ensure proper leadership within our agencies. And when I say proper leadership, I mean just not acting. I mean actually full-fledged executive leadership. And so I look forward to the discussion with respective agencies, and I look forward to my colleagues leveraging their professional networks as well to ensure that we attract these talent here in the city of Baltimore. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
No, thank you so much for your leadership for this bill. One more time so we make sure we have all the co-sponsors. I see Cohen, Costello, Torrance, Glover, Ramos, Stokes, Middleton, Burnett, Conway, Schleifer, Dorsey, and Bullock. This is assigned to committee as a whole. Next up, Madam Clerk, please read the next resolution.
City Council Resolution 23-0153R Investigative Hearing Vacant Building Water Shutoffs for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Department of Public Works, the Department of Housing and Community Development, and the Department of Real Estate, the Baltimore Fire Department, and the Office of the City Administrator to report on why Section 116.4.6 of the Baltimore Community Development to inform the Department of Public Works that there is a vacant building and that the water must be shut off is not being implemented and that the impact of not implementing this section of the building code and a path towards implementation. Sponsor Ramos.
Body would like to recognize a sponsor of the bill. Councilwoman Ramos, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. This resolution, well, let me just back up and say during Christmas time, when we had that freeze, there were a lot of pipes bursting, and we got complaints from our constituents that the house that was next to them is vacant, the pipes burst. And so I know my predecessor actually put something like this in when she was here, and then it did not get a hearing. So I do want to update it a bit to cite the section of the code where... want to, I updated it a bit to cite the section of the code where once a building is deemed vacant, the department is supposed to notify DPW to turn off the water. The other reason to try to think this through and make sure that this gets done is that it's actually more expensive to rehab a property if there's water damage. So this is in the spirit of all the work that we're doing around vacants and also protecting residents from, from water damage from vacant properties. So I look forward to the hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This bill has been assigned, I see the hand raised of Councilman Burnett, as well as Vice President Middleton, Ms. Porter, Councilwoman Porter. I believe that's it. This has been assigned to ECD. Now, we're going to turn it over to the consent calendar. You can find the consent calendar in section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to proceed? It's been moved. It's been moved and probably second for us to approve the consent calendar. All of the favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The consent calendar is now approved. We'll now move into committee reports. Actually, no, we do have, I think, a couple bills on second reader. At this time, I'll call on Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we'll be in short titles for the duration of the meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we are in short titles. First up, we're going to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in the first bill.
EA two two dash zero one five one, Peter Bold, Member Police Accountability Board, District One.
The body would like to recognize Chairman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee met on January nineteenth to hear twelve nominations for the Police Accountability Board. We are moving all twelve favorable. So I'd like to move this nomination favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably second. All of the favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The recommendation is confirmed and moves on to third reading. Madam Clerk?
EA two two dash zero one five two, Megan Kenny, Member Police Accountability Board, District Twelve.
Chairman Schleifer?
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All of the favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The nomination recommendation is moved on for confirmation acceptance. Madam Clerk?
EA two two dash zero one five three, Stephanie V. Lee, Member Police Accountability Board, District Four.
Chairman Schleifer?
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All of the favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The recommendation has moved on to third reader. Madam Clerk?
EA two two dash zero one five four, Antoine Burton, Member Police Accountability Board, District Six.
Body would like to recognize Chairman Schleifer.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All of the favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The recommendation has moved on for confirmation of third reading. Madam Clerk?
EA two two dash zero one five five, Dr. Doris Minor Terrell, Member Police Accountability Board, District Twelve.
Body would like to recognize Chairman Schleifer.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All of the favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The recommendation will move on to third reading. Madam Clerk?
EA two two dash zero one five six, Jamal Turner, Member Police Accountability Board, District Two.
Chairman Schleifer?
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All of the favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The recommendation will be moved on to third reading. Madam Clerk?
EA two two dash zero one five seven, Jasmine O. Riggins, Member Police Accountability Board, District Three.
Chairman Schleifer?
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All of the favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The recommendation moves on to third reading. Madam Clerk?
EA two three dash zero one five nine, Mariazu Oninaka, Member Police Accountability Board, District Fourteen.
Chairman Schleifer?
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All of the favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The recommendation moves on to third reading. Madam Clerk?
EA two three dash zero one six zero, Ms. Chrisely L. De Los Santos Polanco, Member Police Accountability Board, District One.
Mr. Chairman Schleifer?
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All of the favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This recommendation moves on to third reading. Madam Clerk?
EA two three dash zero one six one, Harold Madison, Member Police Accountability Board, District Twelve.
Chairman Schleifer?
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All of the favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This recommendation moves on for third reading. Madam Clerk?
EA two three dash zero one six two, Brian A. Upsher, Member Police Accountability Board, District Three.
Chairman Schleifer?
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All of the favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This recommendation will move on for third reading. Madam Clerk?
EA two three dash zero one six three, Joshua Harris, Member Police Accountability Board, District Nine.
Chairman Schleifer?
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and probably second. All of the favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The recommendation moves on to third reading. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. At this time, we're going to go into committee announcements. As I call out your committee, please be prepared to provide any announcements. First up, ECD. Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Economic and Community Development Committee would like to announce the following hearings, which will be held in the Clarence D. Burns Chambers at City Hall and online via Webex at, on February twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, at two oh one P M. Bill number twenty two dash oh two eight nine, which is a zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R eight zoning district, and that's eight six seven Holland Street. Sponsor Bullock. At two oh two P M., Bill number twenty two dash oh two nine one, and that's the Urban Renewal Market Center Amendment. Sponsor Costello. And at two oh three P M., Bill number twenty two dash oh three oh oh, that's the Waterfront Management District and Waterfront Management Authority renewal through April twenty three, twenty twenty seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Next up, education. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee will reconvene a hearing for Council Resolution twenty two dash one oh seven R, informational hearing, school safety on Thursday, February the ninth, twenty twenty three, at ten A M. And this committee is reconvening the last hearing that was held on August twenty fifth, at twenty twenty two. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, health. Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up, public safety.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be meeting to hear LO twenty one dash zero zero one five, Baltimore City Fire Department, EMS stat and operations on multiple dates, February fifteenth, twenty twenty three, at two P M., May seventeenth, twenty twenty three, at one P M., September sixth, twenty twenty three, at one P M., and December sixth, twenty twenty three, at one P M. And that will be, of course, here at one P M.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, rules. No announcements. Thank you. And then last but certainly not least, Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on, go in order here, Tuesday, January thirty first, at ten A M. on Council Bill twenty two dash zero two nine nine, tax credits historic properties, application extension. Committee will also hold hearings on Tuesday, February seventh, at ten A M. Legislative Oversight twenty one dash zero 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 three, budget briefing from the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, as well as at ten oh one A M., Legislative Oversight twenty one dash zero 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 three, budget briefing from Baltimore City Public Schools. And finally, the Biennial Audits Oversight Commission will hold its first annual hearing of the year on Wednesday, February first, at five P M. in council chambers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The committee as a whole will also reconvene the work sessions associated with City Council Bill two two dash zero one nine five, inclusionary housing for Baltimore City, on Monday, February the thirteenth, at five P M. Another hearing will be televised live on Charm City TV. Again, that's Monday, February the thirteenth, at five P M. Now, we're going to go into regular announcements. Are there any regular announcements? Hearing and seeing none. We have one of our amazing council members. Birthday is today. If we could please give a huge round of applause in celebration for Councilwoman Felicia Porter. And before, oh, hold on, hold on, wait, wait, wait. Before, before we sing happy birthday, before we meet again, we're going to also have another council person who has a very momentous birthday. I'll let her tell the number, but if we could please give a huge round of applause for Councilwoman Odette Ramos, who birthday is this Wednesday. You guys ready? One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Councilwoman Porter and Councilwoman Ramos. Birthday, dear Councilwoman Porter and Councilwoman Ramos. Happy birthday to you. All right. In lieu of the little trinkets that the council president used to hand out, that didn't necessarily make the news for the past hundred years, we just sing happy birthday now on the council floor. With that said, there was one additional, oh, you have a, yep.
My mom's birthday is on Wednesday as well, so I just want to say happy birthday, Mom. I know you and Dad are watching, probably on YouTube, but I just want to say happy birthday. Thank you.
No, thank you so much. And there is one additional announcement. If you guys could refer to the memo that was sent out by General Counsel Aaron DeGraffinright regarding the Inspector General Committee. It's important, as duly elected officials, that you guys take the time to select the person that you would like to put into randomization on your own fruition. Councilwoman Odette Ramos fought and worked and tweaked to get it to that level, and we all passed that bill. So it's important for us to live by the letter of the law. And again, you independently decide who you would like to put inside of that magical hat. If there's any questions or concerns, Aaron will make himself available. If you did not go through that process, we ask that you pull your name back out. And again, independently, come up with it. You might come up with the same exact name, but it's important for you to do it by yourself. With that said, I believe that finishes out regular announcements? Well, you get, you get the last say in regular announcements anyway, so.
I had promised I'd mention, I guess, this announcement. So tomorrow, on Tuesday, January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, the Baltimore City Fire Department will be marking the one-year anniversary of the tragic loss of Lieutenant Paul Buttram, Lieutenant Kelsey Sadler, and firefighter, paramedic Kenneth Lucayo. The, a moment of silence will take place at eleven A M. at Battalion Three Headquarters located at fifteen oh three West Lafayette Avenue. And other observations will also take place at more, the, I guess, the other headquarters. And quickly, Battalion, Battalion Chief One, which is five twenty South Conkling Street, Battalion Chief Two, which is eleven hundred Hilton Street, Battalion Chief Four, which is forty-five twenty-two Hartford Road, Battalion Chief Five, which is thirty-nine oh six Liberty Heights Avenue, and Battalion Chief Six, which is fifteen South Utah Street. And people are welcome to join in on this occasion.
And that's tomorrow, council members.
That's tomorrow at eleven A M.
If we can try to do our best for us all to participate. We realize that we just received the information, but obviously this is something that's really important to the city, whether you participate in the citywide or you try to participate in the one in your district. At this point, we're going to recognize the Vice President of this council. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The next meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, February sixth, twenty twenty three, at five P M. At this time, we will recognize a moment of silence for the over twenty-five victims of homicide this year and the more than one thousand nine hundred and thirty-three Baltimoreans who have died from COVID since the beginning of the pandemic. And adding to the list again is Lieutenant Paul Buttram, Lieutenant Kelsey Sadler, and firefighter, paramedic Kenneth Lucayo.
There being no business before the desk, this will conclude the forty-ninth meeting of your seventy-third term of the Baltimore City Council. Baltimore, we love you.